I'd like to call this August 19th, 2021 meeting of the Strongsville Board of Education to order. Mr. Ananostu, would you take the role?
Mrs. Bissell?
Here.
Mrs. Soli?
Yeah.
Mr. Miko?
Here.
Mrs. Howson?
Here.
We are all present. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to take things a little bit out of order from our agenda, and I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Reiba for our recognition tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. We are excited to recognize one of our outstanding employees. She was recognized this summer, but it's our chance to recognize her here in our district, so... I didn't know whether we were supposed to evacuate or... Thank you, Kathy. Thank you. Well, with that, I'll bring up Mr. Brechner.
I also thought that was one of my kids.
So did I.
That's another time, Mosstrak.
Kathy Mikulajczek, if you would come up and join me in your exuberance. So I wanted to make the board aware that we do have in our staff, and a lot of colleagues are here to celebrate with her. We had Mrs. Jill Bush be nominated for the George Sontag Junior... The School Bus Driver of the Year Award. Just to give you some context, as you may expect, from the information that I've been given, George Sontag basically dedicated a lot of his life, from the time he was 13 until his death, in the field of transportation students, whether he was working on buses, driving a bus, even after he was retired, coming back and driving a bus. He was so well revered in the ranks of bus drivers that they decided to name this award for him. So I do want to read to you, before I let Mrs. Mikulajczek say a few words, I wanted to read to you what was said about Jill and in the nomination. The first part, of course, I think is something that I know is very true from my interactions with her. Jill truly loves the students of Strongsville. She is consistently going out of her way to help a student. She has taken her own time to run bookbags that were left behind on a bus to the students' houses when she's completed her route for the day. She even bought students boots. When a student misses a bus in the afternoon, Jill goes and takes that student home. She is essential to the Transportation Department. She knows the district and the department inside and out. She knows all the routes, knows where buses are where, and can split, I'm sorry, and can at the split moment help the supervisors fill the open routes or help when a bus breaks down. She would give up her route and drive a route that needs coverage and cannot be split. She forms amazing bonds with troubled students. She takes time to get to know each student and what's important to that student. Jill doesn't mind taking on the more challenging routes she sees as an opportunity and not, and as a challenge. Jill amazes the supervisors every day with how much she gives of herself into the students of Strongsville. There's nothing that she would not do for a child. She is the ideal model for all school bus drivers, a fantastic person, a school bus driver who always gives of herself to help students. Kathy, say a few words.
Okay. Jill, there were times where you were on the radio all the time, and people would say, "What does she think? She's superwoman? I can do this! I can do that!" She always volunteered herself. So I kind of stepped in just to smooth the pages and say, "Jill, you can't do everything. The times don't match up. You can do this, or you can do that, but you can't do it all because the times aren't matching." And of course, everyone knows transportation is based on time. I don't, I think she was a little mad at me, but she kind of stayed off the radio to volunteer herself too many times. She didn't stay off the radio to give us all information. She has a lot of useless knowledge. In my opinion, not that it's useless, but she knows. "Oh, I did that route three years ago, and that child told me..." Like today, she said, "That child told me she wrote 36", or whatever the number was, in the afternoon. So she, you know, we're at the middle school, and nobody seems to know what stopped the rat because our system was down for a while and everything else. So, you know, she radios 36, and he goes, "Yeah, I cover that", and she's like, "Okay". So we got all the information at the exact time that we needed it at the middle school for the fact that Jill remembers. Don't ask her what she had for dinner Friday night, but she'll know which student was on her bus two or three years ago in the fact that they went to, you know, they rode a certain bus, and we appreciate it. You are an asset to our department and to the whole entire school system. I'm so happy you stayed here and didn't go to Berea. But that's all I want to say. You are truly an asset, and I appreciate everything you've done to help because I can't always remember which kid either. And people ask me things, and I was like, "Ask Jill", because she'll know which route does what. She helped Curtis last year when Lori wasn't here. She's helped Kathy Sterick this year as to what route goes where and what is the best way to split it because obviously we're short four or five drivers, and so we're scrambling to cover the same area. So thank you, Jill, for everything you've done.
So we do have a certificate to go with your plaque. I'll present this to you.
I actually have something I want to say, too. I'm not going to talk real long, but what I want to do is kind of two-part. I want to start by telling a personal story since that seems to be the theme of the week, right? So I started driving in 2008, and I was a sub, and I was driving Bus 67, not your bus. And so I'm subbing on this route, and I'm fairly new, and I pull into the middle school, and I pull around the back of Center Middle School, and I'm just sitting there trying to get my papers organized. This guy comes up, and he gets on the bus, and he's like, "Excuse me, you know, we really would like it if you would shut down the buses when you come here, if you don't mind". And I'm like, "Oh, of course, no problem. That's like standard protocol", but I just kind of, you know, I was frazzled because I was new, and subbing is really hard, by the way. So I, you know, every bus has its little nuances, but I didn't know all of them. So here I shut the bus off, and the door is closed, and he's in the door, stuck in the door, and I'm like, "Oh, my gosh, he's stuck in the door!". And so I flipped the switch to dump the air pressure and push the doors open, and I'm like, "Oh, my God. I'm so sorry. You're okay". And of course, he's laughing, and he's like, he goes, "Don't worry, you can tell all your friends that you just slammed the doors on the bus on the principal of Center Middle School. Right, Dr. Reiba?"
Correct.
We have millions of bus stories, but I had to share that one just because I thought it would be appropriate today. So, okay, so I just wrote a little something, and I just want to say, I'm so honored to have received this award, but I definitely need to make everyone aware that if it wasn't for the fabulous team in the Transportation Department, that's taking up your room here, this couldn't have hap... This couldn't have happened to me. Couldn't have happened for me. We work together and look out for each other, and the students of Strongsville City Schools like no other group of people I've ever worked with. We are always successful. We really have no choice. If you think about it, in any given office scenario, if, say, a secretary calls off sick, the filing doesn't get done, or the letters don't get mailed, and I know that's a real simplistic analogy, but even in the classroom, if you have a really difficult lesson planned and are starting on a new unit or something, and you learn that there's no sub for your class, or that the sub they put in your class isn't really qualified to teach your class, like some of the upper-level classes at the high school, I'm sure are really hard to find subs for, you can have the students like catch up on back work or do silent reading, or sometimes if you're really desperate, you can put a movie in in the younger grades. But imagine what would happen if we had no sub for a bus route in the afternoon, and we told the kids to sit in the classroom and do silent reading until the bus driver came back the next day. Like, it really doesn't work that way for us. There's no option for us to fail. We always get them home in the most efficient manner possible, and yes, that means sometimes we're late, but we all pitch in and get the students of Strongsville City Schools to and from school safely every single day. We are always shorthanded. We know that. This is a fact. But we make it work because we are awesome. We all love our job, we all love our students, and we work together to be successful every single day, whatever it takes, right? Right?
Yeah.
Okay. So I need to say thank you to my coworkers for being awesome and helping make this happen for me, to my new supervisor team, Kathy and Curtis, for creating a positive work environment for all of us because that really makes so much huge difference. You have such a big difference. Thank you. And thank you to all of you on the school board, and Mr. Brechner, and Dr. Reiba, and Mrs. Palco for this great recognition and allowing me to have my family here and my work, my personal family and my work family that I just love so much. I appreciate this so much. Thank you very much.
First of all, Kathy, wherever I go places, you're my hype person now, right? That's right. She does, she does. Well, Jill, congratulations. Thank you, Cheryl. Thank you, Cheryl. We're quickly losing control of this meeting. But Jill, in all seriousness, we're so blessed to have you in our district. Everything that we said, whether we're joking, whether we're serious, you do whatever it takes for our kids. You're a part of a wonderful team at Transportation, everybody working together to do whatever it takes. So congratulations on this well-deserved recognition. Thanks for being a part of our team and what you do for our kids. And it's funny, when you started the story and you said about somebody came on the bus, I was like, "I think I remember doing that a long time ago", and then I felt we were going to get smashed in the doors, and that one I knew, so... Congratulations again. Thank you. I mean, it speaks volumes of you that your whole team is here behind you, supporting you, so congratulations. Back to you, Mr. Miko.
On behalf of the board, I just also want to extend our congratulations to Jill. I do want to remark that I thought I heard Kathy say she had to calm you down. And if that's true, I'm a little scared. But she also said that you said you can't do everything, and I think she's wrong. It sounds like you do do everything, and that's a very nice thing. And then as a fellow lover of useless knowledge, don't let them make fun of you. It's all, it's all very good stuff. At the end of the day, I think it says a lot that all your coworkers and your family is here to support you. I think that's a wonderful thing. But I also think it would be remiss not to comment on the purpose of the award, and that's School Bus Driver of the Year. And you do it with love, and you do it with passion, you do it safely, and that's very important to all of our parents. So I wanted to publicly thank you for that. We have our 20 square feet, and we talk about how you need to be in charge of your 20 square feet. It is 20, right? I'm glad that you disregard the 20, and I'm glad that your square feet is wherever you're driving your bus, and I'm glad that you're that example for all your other coworkers. So congratulations, and thank you very much. Next on our agenda is our district goals. And naturally, my phone went into lock. But our district goals remain the same: student achievement, academic achievement and growth, financial prudence, and community engagement. And tonight, we're going to highlight academic achievement, and we're going to give a shout-out to Senior Dylan Eskow, and I hope I said that correctly, who was recently selected as one of six high school students for the Cleveland Institute of Music's Musical Pathway Fellowship Program. And that's a program that recognizes outstanding Black and Latinx pre-college music students. It's a full scholarship curriculum-based program, and it prepares our students to pursue music at the college and conservatory level. I know that, I know that Dylan's already been doing things at Baldwin Wallace, and I'm sure he's going to have a great senior year and then continue to have a great college career. But that, again, is an example of our academic achievement and growth, and congratulations to Dylan. And now we have public comment, and I have two slips before me. And the first one is Vanessa Smith Whitford. So if you would come to the podium, your name and address, and you have approximately three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Vanessa Smith Whitford, and my address is 18249 Meadow Lane. I'm here to speak to you today regarding the masks' optional policy being implemented by the district. I am not only here on my behalf, but on the behalf of other families in this district that feel the same as I do. I have spoken to at least 20 who share my concerns. Schedules are busy, life is happening, and unfortunately, none of them were able to attend today. I continue to ask people who I speak with to share their concerns with the board. I fully recognize that there is not an appetite for a universal mask mandate in this city. The board members that I have communicated with directly have made that crystal clear. I also recognize that there is not an appetite for significant quarantines due to COVID exposures. I simply do not understand how that fact alone does not push this board to mandate masks for all students under 12 in this district. None of these students are eligible to be vaccinated. None of these students' families are eligible to choose that extra layer of protection for their families. Instead, each family is tasked with the decision of whether to follow the guidelines laid out by four different public health entities. Families are sending young students into the school buildings and expecting that these children will follow their family's rules, which is in many cases contrary to their peers. I am aware of an email that you received today from a parent who was unable to attend this meeting due to prior commitments. Their child was sent to school today in a mask. The teacher had been informed of the family's desire to wear masks. They then received a photo of the classroom in which their child was happily learning without their mask on. A call was put into the school, and the parent was told that there are children whose parents want them in masks, and those children are not necessarily wearing them, furthermore, that it can't really be enforced. Dr. Reiba specifically stated in his email that at the elementary level, families can request teacher support and feedback in terms of having their child wear a mask at school. It was stated that we will do the best we can to help out. That is simply not good enough. What if a child makes a mistake, removes their mask, and no one is aware that it happened? Perhaps that mistake exposes a grandparent or a medically fragile family member. All that it takes is one mistake, one six-year-old child to remove their mask and be next to the wrong person, and things can snowball from there. Imagine how much less impactful that mistake could be if every child in their classroom was masked. I'm sure that there will be people that answer that question with, "Then stay home. Stay away from other people." We can all acknowledge that the school is the best place for these children to be, both for learning and socialization. Your job as a board of education is to provide the safest environment possible. By willfully ignoring the guidance laid out by the CDC, the Ohio Board of Health, the Cuyahoga County Board of Health, and the American Academy of Pediatrics, you are not providing the safest environment possible. I implore you to reach out to a medical professional to consult with regarding your mask policy. There are parents in the district that work on COVID task forces. We do intruder drills, we install bolo sticks, all to help further protect children from the possibility of a random horrific event. I simply cannot understand why, at this point, based on evidence and direction from qualified medical personnel, this board cannot take this simple step to protect all our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Vanessa. And next is Bonnie Tennis. I hope I said that right? Again, name and address, and you have approximately three minutes.
Okay, my name is Bonnie Tennis, and I'm at 9407 Brushwood Lane, and I'm a resident in Strongsville for over 30 years. And I would like to talk to you today about the salary schedule. Actually, I got inspired by Mr. Nassau to look into some things and get educated a little bit how, you know, how the school's finances work and all that. And I am a little bit concerned about because the requirements for full retirement changed. For 35 years, it was 2013, but the schedule did not change yet. The schedule is aggressive as it was before, and it's up to 20 years. I mean aggressive because it should slow down a little bit because it was 20, teachers used to retire after 25. Now, after 35 years, and yet, it goes only up to 20 years. So what this kind of concerns me about, that in the future, where there is hardship in Strongsville, the teachers above their 20 years of experience, they might go on strike because they're not going to get anything at all unless the base amount is increased. Now, even if the base amount does not increase, the teachers are getting raises, and there are very good raises, and, but, it's not very friendly to BAs. I did ask in the email if it's required to have master's degree by Ohio, but it's not. So I do not understand why the BAs, it's kind of like a punishment to them, that they, you're 13, it ends, and then are forced to go and get a master's degree. Some of them might not afford it. Some of them might not have the means, like those others that jumped from MA to MA50. And if it's not required, why not give them? Like Braxton or Bellevue, they revised it, and they gave a little bit, so they slowed it down, but they gave, you know, and they spread it a little bit more over 35 years instead of just 20 years. And that is a very big issue because it might happen in the future, and again, the teachers will go on strike. So the ones above 13 or 14 years that have experience, they might go on strike, and then the other ones will follow. Of course, they will follow because it's in their interest to get even more, you know, more increases than the ones that are getting above that 13-year. So, and I, and I would like to stress that I am a member and a community, and I always worked full-time, and I never really had time to understand any of the finances of the school, and I'm getting into it because I am retired. So I'm looking into it. But like I said, thanks to Mr. Nassau because of the way he treated me, I started looking into it. Because in 2019, when I went to the meeting, and I told Mr. Nassau that some of the teachers make too much money, especially when it comes to someone that has a PhD and teaches in preschool. Now, many, if you look at, there are 680 districts. I looked at many of the salary schedules. Many of them do not have a PhD. Why Strongsville has to page for PhD if Strongsville is not a very wealthy district? I know you said, Mr. Reba, that you said that Strongsville is considered a rich community, but it's not really rich. We have rich people, but we also have people that are below, you know... When we're talking about Solon, when you're talking about Westlake, and we're talking about Orange, they all make over $100,000. Now, Strongsville is not more rich than Medina. Medina is maybe 83. In 2019, there was $83,000, you know, average, and 85 is for Strongsville, so it's not like we're rich. So it could be, spread it a little bit better. It could be modified, and Beechwood modified salary schedule, Solon modified schedule because they were too high, so they're kind of slowing it down. Beechwood did three times already. You know, other districts are doing, and we're kind of going up fast, fast, not considering that it's 35 years now until teachers retire. So, and it's really not fair to community to support that because it's like every five years, you know, we're kind of sitting, okay, we're passing the levies, but every five years, it's like we're sitting like on needles because what's going to happen? Are the teachers going to be on strike again? You know, and is it going to happen? Now, as long as community gives the teachers and gives the increases, then of course, it will work. But there are times that, you know, that, and other districts like Solon and other districts, Beechwood or others, they say, "Okay, no increases this year", but it seems like, you know... It's, in our district here, it's not considered. It hasn't been reviewed, and I am concerned about it. Also, when someone, I mean, when people are curious about it, why not, for this district, to be very open with the numbers? Why not put the salary schedule on the website, school website? Why not put the contract on the website? I can find it. I know a lot of people can't, but I can find it. I found everything. So if people have time, they can look into it, but that's why people are kind of curious, kind of like, you know, very untrusty when it comes to it because if they don't see it, they don't know it. So then, like Mr. Nassau put it at the meeting in 2019, my gosh, people sitting in underwear in their basements and putting things on the website, and then people believe in it, why don't you ask us? Well, then, put something. I mean, Mr., I'm sorry, but Mr. Nassau, personally, the way he inspired me, that he actually told me to get out of the city, to go where I came from. He also told me that I am jealous because I'm not as successful as teachers. You know, we all can't be teachers. We all can't be, people have to be plumbers. People have to do all kind of work. And people work hard. Lot of people work hard. So do teachers. But we all have to be respected. And for him to shut me down like that, that was really, very disrespectful from the board member, head of the board member. And I will never forget that. And that really put a dent, and then put really something in me to, you know, to make some changes here. So people like me in community, they do have a, you know, a voice, and they do have something to say, and then that should be taken under consideration. So when, when...
Bonnie?
Yes. Three minutes is over. So when someone says it's 1.5%, 1.5% can generate over 10% for under 13 of years. So, and it's a lot more if it's 2%. So, so to say that to community that it's only 2%, 1.5% that is not fair. So I would like the contract, maybe, and salary schedule, and explanation to people next time when you're presenting, Mr. Superintendent, when you're presenting. when you're presenting in those, before the levies or something, present and actually tell people what one and a half percent generates for the five-year, you know, when someone has five years with the school, ten years. Just be honest, okay? People will respect that more than, you know, just saying, one and a half percent is nothing, and less than COLA. Or, you know, COLA, actually, two percent is nothing for Social Security, sir. Two percent, one and a half percent is nothing, and teachers are not getting one and a half percent, only the ones that are on a higher level already. So to say that, it's kind of, you know, disrespectful for the community that does support the school, that does care about the community, that does care about, you know, all the people in this district. And it's, you know, and we should be working all together, and, you know, not being, I would say, like Mr. Nassau was, or, you know, that was very, very disrespectful. I'm not saying these board members are, because they are not. Mr. Treasurer was, you know, he's always helpful, always answered my questions. So I can't say anything bad about the board members or anybody else. It's just that I would like, you know, for this board member and you, Mr. Reba, to be more specific about it. Another thing I would like to say, that every district, it's six hundred eighty of them, I looked into it, every one of them has different salary schedule, every one of them has different contracts, different things. And to compare districts to each other, it's like comparing apples and oranges. One district, when they retire, teacher retires, offers hundred fifteen days, like Strongsville, to cash it in, hundred fifteen days to six days. Solon has less, Orange has less, some other has different rules. And I printed actually salary schedules, and if we plug Strongsville numbers into others, actually, Strongsville, what if we would get the base salary schedule and plug it into ours, we actually come out higher, even Solon in some area, even Orange County, and they are a lot more richer than we are.
Bonnie, I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask you to wrap it up. I heard you say we need to work together, I think we all agree. I heard you say you want us to be honest about the numbers, we all agree. And I think you said that, in some instances, our pay scale is as good, if not better, than other districts.
Yes, it is, and it, but I said it should be slowing down because of that thirty-five years that is now for retirement. If I would, if I would do the forecast, which I have, it's unbelievable, unbelievable what it would generate, if, you know. But my biggest problem is that, that if we don't do anything about it, teachers will go on strike. And we're not going to lose teachers, because Strongsville is really paying good. We're not going to lose teachers, definitely. The only reason probably they would leave, if they would not like their community, they would not like people they work with, because the Strongsville School does pay good, and they have good benefits. So, you know, that, to say that they're going to leave, it's not, it's not true. Based on the numbers, it's not true. Because if teachers know their numbers, they know it, what I know now, and they're not going to leave, unless they have to.
Well, I appreciate you coming, Bonnie, and we have a renewal levy in November, so we're going to earn your support, and we're going to earn everybody, all the voters' support. So thank you very much.
And the contract, maybe, on the website, I talked to already, Mr. Treasurer, because people can find it if they want to, why not openly post it there, many districts do. So I really thank you for your time.
Thank you, Bonnie, and keep the conversation going.
Thank you. I will be here at the meeting, I will be, and I present some of the numbers. I do like numbers, so.
Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is resignation of Board of Education member. We have the acceptance of resignation of Board Member Seth Roberts. That's in Exhibit A. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Hausum, second by Mrs. Buckner-Salee, any discussion? So I will say, I want to quote from Seth's resignation letter. "Our family absolutely loved living in Strongsville. Our family has had an amazing time attending Strongsville schools at Kinsner Elementary, making lifelong friends through school, neighbors, youth sports, and attending many community events. I have truly enjoyed coaching many different basketball and baseball teams, getting to know so many different families, and serving the community on the school board. Strongsville will forever have a special place in myself, my wife Melissa, and our boys' hearts." And so I thought that was very well said. I do want to publicly thank Seth for all of his efforts and his hard work. Every board member brings something to the board, and I call it flavor, but everybody has a strength that they bring, and as an example, even though it was a very short time, we had some issues with how we ticket for our sporting events, and thanks to Seth's work and industry knowledge, I guess is the way to put it, we were able to bring Ticket Spicket. We brought Ticket Spicket to the district, and that made it easier for all of our families to purchase tickets for our various sporting events. So I really appreciate everything he's done in the short time, and we wish him well. Anybody else have any other comments? Hearing none, would you take the roll?
Mrs. Hausel?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
And the motion carries. Next on our agenda is Executive-
Before we go to the next session, I received one more public comment.
Oh, I apologize, we can get that in. Okay, returning back to public comment, Kimberly Baga, did I say that correct?
Baga.
Baga. Name and address, and you have approximately three minutes.
Certainly. My name is Kimberly Baga, 14228 Trenton Avenue, and I am here for two reasons. The first reason is payment in lieu of transportation. I did speak, I was here two weeks ago at the last meeting. I spoke with Mr. Brechner after the meeting, and again, via email and once by telephone. I believe that there was some confusion on the form that was sent, and the minimum payment that was authorized by the board was $250. I believe that the state statute actually allows a range of payments, $250 being the minimum, and the maximum being a little over $1,000. And there's a calculation that was included on that form, that calculation took into account distance and days attended school, and number of students being transported in one vehicle. So that calculation was provided on the form, but it didn't really matter, because it only said you were getting $250 anyways. If you do the calculation, even if you fell within that range, you were only getting $250. So I would like the board to take a look at that, and take a look at the form and the calculation, and properly pay the benefits to the people who did not get transportation. And I know that Mr. Brechner said he spoke with Dr. Reba about this, but I'm not sure if the rest of the board has seen the form recently. I think it's an older form, at least four years old, from my understanding. So that's issue number one. Issue number two is the time that it's taking to get the determination as to whether transportation out of the district to a private school or other school out of the district is financially reasonable. I asked two weeks ago for the calculation, haven't gotten the calculation, haven't really gotten much movement, I understand it's the beginning of the year, but, and there's a new Transportation Director, so I'm trying to be patient, but schools also started in other areas. So, you know, as parents work their transportation, that decision would need to, you know, what are they going to do with their students? And if they make the decision and find other transportation, because school has started, they may say, no, I don't need the bus now, because I have a babysitter, I have grandma, or whatever the issue is. So I would like, I would like some, an answer and some expediency on this. So that's, and just a reminder about House Bill 110, where the calculations for this year are actually changing, so.
So I'm going to, I'm going to make a couple of quick responses. So as far as the, as far as the payment is concerned, we will determine what's correct, and if we need to fix something, we'll fix it.
Okay.
I mean, if we owe people money based on what the state law is, we'll address that and we'll fix it.
Okay.
If we're not, we're going to communicate that to you, so you understand it.
Certainly.
And then, the board has been kept in the loop on the busing issues. Cameron, do you have any updates?
Sure, so I just want to be clear on what hap- Every year I've been a superintendent, we've had this discussion with St. Ambrose. St. Ambrose says, we have plenty of students that want busing. We send out a specific form to parents, saying, would you like busing? We don't get enough of those back, which doesn't warrant any busing. So in terms of, you know, how we make that calculation, I think in years past, we maybe had twenty-five Strongsville students that were attending St. Ambrose, around, you know, somewhere around there. And we would get, you know, five, six, seven, whatever it was, that said they would like transportation. There's no magic number, we have to look at, can we route those on a bus that's going, you know, around the city, is it its own separate route, what does that be? But if you take a look at, fifteen is a good number. Fifteen is a number where we say, okay, either we could justify that, or we can get them on another bus. So I believe, and Steve will have to give me an update tomorrow, but I believe last time when we spoke, as he shared, we were sharing things with families to say, do you want, we've heard there's more Strongsville families, there's a few more Strongsville families at St. Ambrose, so we're going through the same process of seeing, do you need transportation? If we get enough kids that, get enough families that say they want transportation, we could either create our own route, or we could say, hey, we've got a bus that's in that area that can make that route and have that happen. Well, what happened in practice then, is we would track that for a year to see what we've, what we've noticed with other schools that we worked with in the past, is parents will say, absolutely, I want transportation just as a safety net, and then they actually never use it. So a couple of years ago, the board may remember, we had another school district, or another private parochial school, that we had thirty people say they wanted transportation. By midway through the year, we were transporting three or four kids. So we gave ample notice. So those are the things. I'll follow up with Mr. Brechner tomorrow to see where we're at in getting that information back. We'll loop back with you by Monday at the latest. We'll see where we're at, if we have the numbers, we'll do, we'll track, and we'll progress monitor as we go through. The last part that I wanted to mention is in terms of, I have seen the form that you were giving, another families were given, and, you know, I understand what you're talking about, where it said there's a calculation for fifty cents a mile, or-
Right, there's a calculation, but it-
Sure.
It goes to the $250 anyway, it doesn't matter what the calculation is.
Right, so the process, you know, you've got the minimum, you've got the maximum, you can calculate, as long as you don't go below the minimum or above the maximum. The board, ever since I've been here, has just said, we're going to pay the minimum, which is $250, and they base the calculation off of making $250 work, in terms of the, you know, per day rate. So yes, the calculation for this year is changing. As I'm sure you're aware, it's going to be fifty percent of the state average. We don't know what that number is. Typically, I think on the website, last year, we found out what the payment range for payment in lieu of was around in March. Sometimes we get a little earlier, sometimes we get a little later. So as soon as we know that, it comes to the board. We'll have a discussion for this year and moving forward. You know, again, there'll be a maximum. People are saying that 500 probably will be the new minimum, based on a variety of calculations of where it was in 2019 around the state. So when we have that, that's when the board will make a decision, moving forward, as to what the rate will be for payment in lieu of, and then Mr. Miko addressed in terms of the prior payments. So by Monday, we'll let you know where we're at in the process with St. Ambrose busing for this year.
Okay. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Let us know if we, let us know if we're doing a good job, let us know if we're not.
Thank you, you're doing a great job.
Next on our agenda is Executive Session. We have a reason to go into Executive Session at this time on two topics, I believe.
Yep, to consider the appointment of a public official, and to consider the employment of a public employee.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second? Motion by Mrs. Hausum, second by Mrs. Buckner-Salee, any discussion? George, would you take the roll?
Mrs. Hausel?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
The motion carries, and we will go into Executive Session at 7:45. We do not know when we'll be out, but we will be as expeditious as possible, and we will continue the meeting at that time. It is 8:33, and we are resuming public session. Next on our agenda is Approval of Minutes. Before us, we have the June 29th, July 8th, and July 12th Board of Education meetings. All district video and audio recordings are a permanent part of the minutes and available on our website. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second? Motion by Mrs. Hausum, second by Mrs. Buckner-Salee, any discussion? George, would you take the roll?
Mrs. Hausel?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
And the motion carries. Next on our agenda is Treasurer's Report. Mr. Anakastu.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. I have a few items for consideration tonight. The first is Item A, is the financial report for month ending June 30th, 2021, which can be found in Exhibit B. With that, since it's the close of the fiscal year for 2021, I just wanted to go over the supplemental report, which compares it to the five-year forecast and how the district finished the fiscal year. So you should have the supplemental report in front of you, but it's also presented on the screen. So just to kind of quickly go over it. In summary, how we did to the forecast, which was approved in May. Revenues exceeded the forecast by $66,443. Expenditures were under compared to the forecast by 1.6 million, which impacted cash favorably by 1.6 million as well. The cash balance, we finished with 11,388, or $11,388,000 more compared to last June, and it was, as mentioned, 1.6 million in the May forecast. And the total balance, as of cash balance at June 30th, was 53,000, or 53.1 million, compared to 41.7 million in 2020. For revenues, revenues were $723,000 more compared to last June. The primary reasons for the increase was primarily due to state funding. As you recall, last year, due to COVID and the isolations, the state reduced state funding in May and June, so that was fully restored, so, which is why it shows the increase this June compared to last June. And then also, other revenues were higher due to some, due to property tax payment in lieu of settlements, and also Medicaid reimbursements were higher as well compared to last June. Year-to-date, year-to-date revenues were $5.6 million more for this fiscal year than last fiscal year, which were 79.7 million last fiscal year versus the 85.3 million this year. Primary reasons for the increase was the second half of the levy being collected during this fiscal year. We also received $1.2 million in Bureau workers' compensation refunds and dividend payments, and also the state funding was reduced last year as well. And as mentioned earlier, compared to the May forecast, it was $66,443 more than the May forecast. than the May forecast. For expenditures, expenditures were 561,000 dollars more compared to last, last June. Expenditures totaled close to 7 million dollars, while last June, they were about 6.4 million. The reason for the increase in June was more for the general fund transfers and advances that we had to other funds to cover deficits, and then salary benefits are higher compared to last June due to negotiated agreements in healthcare premiums, which have increased by 3.3%. Year-to-date fiscal year, 21 expenditures were 73.9 million versus fiscal year 20, which were 70.7 million, or 3.2 million dollars higher, or 4.58%. Salary and benefits were higher, as mentioned, due to the salary, the negotiated increases in healthcare costs, which, same reason for June, but it accumulated throughout the course of the year. Purchased services, materials, and supplies indicated 89, close to 83% encumbrance expenditure level through June, which was slightly lower than the 84.6% through the end of last year. And then compared to the forecast, expenditures were 1.6 million dollars, or 2.08% lower than the forecast, and it was primarily in purchased services and materials and supplies. So, that's how we finish this year, and then the next update to the five-year forecast will be in November of 2020.
Any questions for George? Please continue.
Thanks. Item B is the financial report for the month ending July 31st, 2021, which can be found in exhibit C. Item C is a student activity program budget purposing goals for a new student activity count at the high school for a spirit squad, and their starting budget would be $2,000. Item D, grant approval. We received an S- Strongsville Education Foundation grant for intervention kits for kindergarten students in the amount of $2,150. Item E, amended appropriations, which can be found in exhibit E. And then lastly, item F, which is a separate vote, is the OSBA Capital Conference Delegate for the annual business meeting on November 8th during the OSBA Capital Conference, which is November 7th, 8th, and 9th.
So, we need to appoint a delegate and an alternate. For a number of years, I've been the delegate, and various people have been alternates, but with my work schedule recently, I'm not confident that I will be able to attend this year. So, I would like to nominate or recommend Laura Hausum to be the delegate, and I know she would do an excellent job if she accepts the nomination. Will you accept?
I'd be fine.
Thank you. So, Laura Hausum will be the delegate, and then I know that Michelle is already going to the conference in her capacity at Polaris, and obviously, Sheri, are you going, or you don't know yet?
I think so. I'll check with Dawn, but, does Sheri sign up to go?
I signed up.
Okay.
So, would you be willing to be the alternate?
Yeah. I mean, Michelle?
I'm not eligible. It's not clear who's the representative.
Okay, yeah.
So, our alternate will be Sheri Buckner-Sully. Any other discussion? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And I, I will second it, because we have the two candidates. So, the motion was moved by Mrs. Bissell, seconded by myself. Any discussion? Hearing none, please take the roll.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
And Mrs. Sully?
Yes.
The motion carries, and I know both of you will do a great job. Thank you.
And with that, that concludes my report.
Any other questions for George? Hearing none, superintendent's report, Dr. Raiba.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. Before I get to the one item under my section, I just wanted to give an update on the start of the school year, so thank you to all of our administrators, teachers, and staff. We've had, I've been to all of the buildings but one, we've got one more on the list to go to tomorrow, but just a phenomenal job welcoming back our students and getting the new school year started. I'd like to thank our parents for their understanding and patience, as we have, you know, procedures and rules, and, and at any time of the new year, we're working out some of the kinks and the bumps with scheduling or transportation, whatever it may be. I just want to share, I shared an email update, I think yesterday, about Here Comes the Bus app. As I said, we have a lot of computer programs that are talking to one another, and Steve worked diligently today and yesterday to look at the Here Comes the Bus app with the company. We've, we found the glitch, and so we're hopeful that everybody's app should be able to be used for those that weren't able to use it starting tomorrow. So, if you have any issues, please reach out to me, reach out to Steve. That way, we can individually problem solve. As Steve explained it to me, somehow, the computer programming was looking at cell X, and it needed to look at cell Y, and that's why it was missing kids. So, we've corrected that issue, and Here Comes the Bus app should be working tomorrow for those that it didn't. Also, as a reminder, please make sure you look and use our directions and put in our school code. If you just search for the school, it's not going to work. You need our, our school code. Secondly, we do know that there's been some glitches with our buses and bus stops. Again, we had another computer challenge that we've been working through, through the programming. They've identified what it was today. As lovely as it is, one system was using abbreviation for street, avenue, road. The other was using the full word, and when those communicated with one another, it kept on knocking it out every night in the upload. So, that's been corrected, Steve's fixed that, and so, you know, we'll be chipping away at that and making sure some of those glitches are fixed as we move forward. So, we appreciate everybody's patience there. In terms of, I did want to update the board and the community. You know, last time we met, I went through the operating procedures, we did a community conversation. October 5th, we had the board meeting, we shared that. October 9th, we had a community conversation. One of the things that I shared at that time in terms of social distancing is, we're going to maintain three feet whenever possible, and that, especially at the element, or at the elementary level, we would keep kids in rows and not group them together in cooperative groups, and we'd phase that in later. In the interim, teachers came back on, well, they're coming back throughout the summer, but officially came back on Monday. Based on nuances in terms of desk size, class enrollment, class size, there were, and what's best educationally for the students, there was some requests to, 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 we could still meet the social distance of three feet, but put students in cooperative groups. And so, if you go throughout our district, there's some classrooms that have that, there's some classrooms that don't. We have received parent feedback, you know, some concerns about grouping and kids facing one another. In terms of, and I confirmed this today, in terms of the guidance from the Ohio Department of Health, there's nothing in terms of directionality, social distancing, it's all about the distance. But we do understand the concerns and the preferences of our parents, so I had a preliminary conversation with our building principals, about the elementary building principals this morning about the topic. I will be following up with them tomorrow. So, on Monday, I'll share an update with our parents in terms of where we're going, in terms of how classrooms are going to be set up, and what that's going to look like based on some different nuances, but what's going to be our main mode of operation. And as everybody knows, the board, and we meet every two weeks, so every two weeks, we can continue to look at and see if we, if the evidence demonstrates that we can move from that position. But Monday, I'll provide an update to the community in terms of the direction we'll go based on that issue. The other thing came up in public comment, I wanted to share again, that, you know, as I shared in my update, we are going to do everything we can to support parents' wishes in schools. Again, I strongly recommend folks, adults and students, wear their masks, especially for those that are unvaccinated, but that's, it's not required. It's, it's a choice that each person needs to make. But, you know, in terms of honoring parent wishes at the elementary schools, we are going to make every reasonable effort we can to help support that. I've used the example, I think in my community conversation, or even in writing about glasses, right? You know, parents ask us to make sure kids are wearing the glasses, we're going to do that. We just ask that you're understanding, I'm not making excuses, but in the first week of school, there's a lot going on. We're learning kids' names, we're learning where kids are going to be, we're, all the nuances that go, so we may, we may miss some, a few here and there, but we're going to, we're going to make our best effort to honor those wishes and communicate, and remind, and as things get a little more into the normal groove of the school year, we can be more diligent with that. But we'll continue to remind our staff to do their best effort to help students remember as they, as they go throughout the school day. So, just a few updates I wanted to provide in terms of the start of the school year. Any questions or anything from the board on that topic?
Thank you, Cameron.
Yeah. In terms of my one item, we do have one item, diversity consultant contract and service agreement with the Diversity Center of Northeast Ohio, which will be paid through, through our wellness funds. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the board enters and approves the contract and service agreement with the Diversity Center of Northeast Ohio to provide consulting services for this 21-22 school year as listed in exhibit F. Any questions on that? All right, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Steve for the business service report for the month. Steve?
Good evening, everyone. The first item in business services is the security contract. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education approves the security service contract addendum with Allied Universal for services at the high school. Listed there is the straight time rate and the overtime rate. This rate structure will be effective beginning August 19th of 2021. All services will be paid out of the parking lot fee revenues in the high school 018 fund, and that's exhibit G.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Hausum, second by Mrs. Buckner-Sully. Any questions or discussion? Is this Mr. Bickelmeier?
Yes.
He does a great job.
He does.
Any other questions? George, take the roll.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Mrs. Sully?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
And the motion carries.
The second item is the copier and printer maintenance agreement. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent. Let the operations manager be authorized for new the agreement with Meritech for the service and supply program for the district's copiers and printers. This agreement is to be effective for one year, September 4th, 2021, to September 3rd, 2022. The cost will be based on the monthly meter program, and that's found in exhibit H. The third item, GIFs. Individual units of the Strongsville PTA awarded numerous grants to their specific buildings totaling $37,420.59, as listed in the exhibit, and that is exhibit I.
Any questions for Steve? Thank you, Steve. Next up with the curriculum report, as I pace out the cadence of my speech to let Aaron get up to the podium, is our wonderful Director of Curriculum, Erin Green.
Oh, I thank you, good evening. Just one item tonight for your consideration, and that is item one, Ohio Online Learning Program through the Esser Funding. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that Strongsville City School District pays for students to participate in the Ohio Online Learning Program through the Educational Service Center of Northeast Ohio at an approximate cost of $75,000 for the 21-22 school year.
Any questions for Erin? Thank you, Erin.
I have a question.
I saw it coming.
Can you just remind us exactly what this, I know we have lots of online moving parts, which one is this one?
Sure, this is our K through 5 solo academy online learning program, so it's Lincoln Learning.
Lincoln Learning, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Next up is Andy with our student service report for the month. Andy?
Good evening, members of the board. I have three items for you this evening. The first is Applewood Centers. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that Strongsville Board of Education enters into an agreement with Applewood Centers Incorporated, operating an educational institution known as the Gerson School for Placement of Students with Disabilities for the school year 2021 to 22 at the cost of $43,048.92. Item two, Monarch School of Belfair Jewish Children's Bureau. Be resolved upon the recommendation, superintendent, that the Strongsville Board of Education enters into an agreement with Monarch School of Belfair Jewish Children's Bureau for the special education and related services for replacement of a student with disabilities during the school year in the amount of $84,348, extend the school year to cost of $7,028 for a total of $91,368. And lastly, we have tuition-free admission of foreign exchange students. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that tuition-free admission for this school year be granted to the following foreign exchange students. Any questions for me?
Thank you, Andy.
All right, thank you. Thanks, Andy. Next, we have our Assistant Superintendent Jenny Pelco with our Human Resource Report for the month. Andy?
Thank you. Under Human Resources, I have the following items for your consideration this evening. Under E1, we have the resignation of a certificated stipend, resignation of non-certificated staff member. Under E2, appointment for a certificated staff member, appointments for certificated substitutes, appointments for non-certificated substitutes, appointment for a certificated supplemental contract, appointment for a non-certificated athletic supplemental contract, appointments for testing consultants. Under E3, we have an educational upgrade for one of our leadership team members. Under E4, medical leaves for a certificated staff. Under E5, medical leaves for a non-certificated staff. And under E6, a salary upgrade for a non-certificated staff member. And finally, under E7, stipend for a certificated teacher-based team coach. And that concludes my report.
We have no items for technology for this month, so that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Cameron? Next is report on Polaris Career Center, Michelle Bissell.
Ooh, wonderful.
I'm reading.
I wanted to share first, congratulations to Maria Didik. Over the summer, she was the recipient of the Brea Art Fest Student Scholarship. She's one of our Strongsville High School students and also was a Polaris student in the Interactive Multimedia Program. So, it's wonderful that our students are being recognized in the community as well, and also wishing her best of luck as she pursues a career and college at the Modern College of Design. And that's in Kettering, I believe. Secondly, school has started for Polaris. As, as far as I've heard, everything is smooth, so if you have any questions, concerns, feel free to reach out. But if you happen to be over there anytime soon, you will notice that the exit driveway has been repaved, so those potholes are taken care of. And finally, I brought this, this came to my, my house, and I was interested in it. This is the Adult Education Catalog, you can also find it online. But they do offer some youth programs, so if you have students here, they're eligible for these, like, extracurricular kind of programs, feel free to check it out, or if you're looking for some, something else to do or to learn, there are all kinds of opportunities, so please do take a look. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Next is report on legislation. Sheri Buckner-Sully and myself. I'm going to continue the pattern. Do you have anything? They, it has been quiet, and we've been busy, so we will have a better report on legislation next month. Board liaison reports, city council?
Yes, city council. August is council recess month. Meetings will resume again on September 7th. In the meantime, the Economic Development Committee will meet August 23rd at 7:00 PM at the council chambers. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Strongsville Education Foundation?
Yes, I just want to thank the foundation for their continued support. They're working on another great grant that will help our middle and high school math departments, so I can't wait to hear the outcome of that. Also, they will have a fall fundraiser that our students and families will be able to participate in, then falls tailgating in the end zone at a home football game, and more details are to come about that. That concludes our report.
Strongsville PTA Council?
We have a math conference this year, so I don't have anything.
That concludes my report.
We're excited to hear what the PTA has for the upcoming year. And Ohio School, Ohio School Board Student Achievement. Seth isn't with us, but with the beginning of school, we're looking, to look forward to a great school year, and we'll be able to tell the community about some of the great student achievement that occurs during the year. Board Committee reports, Finance Committee?
We haven't had a meeting, and we-
The meeting is to be announced. Policy Committee, we do have some policies up for second reading, and our next meeting is to be announced. Facility Committee?
Our next meeting is September 9th, here at the admin building at 6:30 PM.
And Business Advisory Council?
Next meeting is to be announced.
Next on our agenda is Consent Calendar. Action by the Board of Education and adoption of the Consent Calendar means that all items- Action by the Board of Education and adoption of the consent calendar means that all items appearing within the agenda with an asterisk are adopted by one single motion unless requested otherwise. Do I have any otherwise? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Hausum, second by Mrs. Buckner-Sully. Any discussion? George, take the role.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Mrs. Sully?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissel?
Yes.
And the motion carries. Superintendent's Timely Information.
Nothing specific for this meeting, just ask parents to keep an eye out for their emails. We've sent a couple email updates. I'll have another one for this Monday, and then we'll get into the every other week and more if necessary. But as always, if you're not getting our emails every Monday, you can go on the, on the website in the COVID, not in the COVID, where is it, Dan? I just looked at it the other day. Anyway, I think if you go Find It Fast, there's the weekly parent email updates. You can get those there. But if you're not getting our emails or any emails, your principals are sending something out every week. I'm sending something out, Dan is. It means your, your system is, your email's not either right in our computer system or it's going to spam. So reach out, we can diagnose and see what's going on. So if you're not getting any communication from us, let us know, and we can make sure and fix the issue so you can have that communication. So just keep an eye out for all that information that's coming home.
And I will say for myself, I like that we use the, at least for Cameron's communication, we use the remind system, so it reminds me to go check my email.
That's right.
Because sometimes that's what I need is a reminder to check that particular mailbox, so I think that's a great thing.
And just as, thank you, Mr. Miko. At the bottom, you have to enroll to have the reminder text option. We cannot just force that to you. So if you don't have that text option, we use it sparingly, but at the bottom of every parent update, it tells you how to enroll, so it'll give you the number to text and enroll, and then you're in.
Next on our agenda is Board Policies. We do have a number of board policies that are up for second reading. Again, please review them. If you have any questions or concerns, please follow up, and these will be on, on for adoption at our next board meeting. Board of Education Other, do we have any Board of Education or others? So I will comment to the community. We do, obviously, we accepted Mr. Roberts' resignation, and we do need to appoint a new member to the Board of Education. Today was our deadline for applications. We received 16 applications. My wish, and I've shared this with a couple of people before and now, my wish whenever we have to, whenever we find ourselves in this position, is that the board has a hard decision to make because we have a number of excellently qualified candidates. And we are blessed in Strongsville. We have a group of candidates, and I'm sure we will have a hard decision to make, but ultimately, kind of like The Bachelor or The Bachelorette, there's a lot of, a lot of candidates, but we can only pick one. So we'll be picking one soon enough. And then the other Board of Education Other I have is, we have football starting. We have an away game this Friday, and then we have a home game on August 27th, so that'll be exciting, and we have a lot of other sports that I'm sure we'll get a timely update from the superintendent so we can watch them and cheer on our athletes.
I think we have soccer versus Jackson on Saturday.
And this is...
Cross, yeah?
And this is, they want to, asking everybody to come out to celebrate, or not celebrate to recognize the Solowski family, so...
And that's an important thing also, so thank you. And so we did have our first day of school, so I want to congratulate everyone on a successful first day of school, and obviously, there's a lot of, just as, just as many challenges as always, but we will work together to meet them and make sure we have a great school year. Meeting Notification. A regular Board of Education meeting work session will be held Thursday, September 2nd, 7:00 PM in this room. The next meeting after that is September 16th, 7:00 PM in the, in the meeting room in this room. We do have need for executive session.
Also, meeting notification, we have a special board meeting.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Was it 21st? September 20, or August 21st at 9:00 AM.
Thank you very much. We do have need for executive session on the topics of?
To consider the appointment of a public official and to consider the employment of a public employee.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Hausum, second by Mrs. Buckner-Sully. Any discussion? Hearing none, take the role.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Ms. Sully?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bissel?
Yes.
The motion carries. We will enter into executive session at 9:05. We have no expectation of further business. Thank you for your attention, and have a nice evening, and have a great school year.